Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, July 9th, 2014. And fourteen. So I'll call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner David Henry, Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Christmas.
Here.
Commissioner Palacios.
Here.
Commissioner Luke's.
For now, yes.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, so if we rise, Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, um... I would like, you guys looked over the agenda, and I'd like to hear a motion to approve.
Sure move.
Second? First and second to approve. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we'll do... We'll follow this agenda. First is approval of the meetings from June 11th, 2014.
I move to approve.
Since I was the only one here.
Right, yeah. I think, I believe it's only the two of you who can vote on it.
I read them and I seconded. They were very thorough. Thank you.
So, vote on it. Aye.
Aye. So move. We have a citizens forum. Anybody wishing to speak?
(Inaudible). I'm on the stage, okay. I speak to the audience.
You can actually speak to the...
Oh, okay. So, I built a sign...
Excuse me, you need to state your name and so forth.
Okay, for like, the record or... Okay, my name is Tamara Fache. I'm a small business owner in Baca Plaza. Is that all?
You have to swear to tell the truth.
It does not do.
No more? We don't do that anymore?
You can lie.
No social security.
It's not a public hearing, you can lie.
Oh, well, you can use your judgment. Who will judge you accordingly?
Okay, I, um...
Thank you.
I don't know if, did you get those images printed?
I did, and they have a copy of the sign.
Okay, so it's basically, I used to have a different sign that faded, and I took pieces of plywood, made that, and then had three artists contribute to it. One is Larry Bell did the electroplating on the arrow. Larry Bell is a well-known artist here in Taos. And Ed Sandoval did the lettering. I traded green juice drinks for the lettering, which he did very simply in about two minutes, and said, "There you go." But still, I thought I would have a nice piece that was a compilation, kind of like a collage sign. And then the rest of our work's done by a sixteen-year-old that was trained by, or partially trained by the woman on Ladue, but he moved to Wisconsin. He lived in Dixon, Tristan. His last name is Tristan. T. Garden, or something like that. So he did the background. So I have three very well-trained artists that did this sign. The only complication on it is the iridescence on the arrow. The iridescence is very, because I sanded it to give it, so it'd have more attachment for the electroplating, it doesn't shine brightly. It's a very dull gleam to it. So, but before, when I talked to people in the sign department, they said I would have to go through an extensive historic district process involving signatures for like, everybody in the county and stuff like that. But I mean, it's not that expensive. It's like a hundred feet perimeter or something around my building where I have to get all, everybody's signatures and so on and so forth. So I'm just checking to see if maybe like, how I can work out simplifying keeping this sign. The square footage perimeter is already taken care of. It's been taken care of for a while.
Excuse me, what's the address? I'm not recognizing your building.
It is La Quiva. It's next to La Quiva.
Oh, coming up the main drag?
Yeah.
Okay. Same building as the bike shop and stuff around the corner?
Yeah, if you're driving up Quesnel, you'd see the bike shop sign over there. And then La Quiva's right here. And as you go up, the White Plaza building, it's shaped like this. I'm in the corner next to Amigos Bravos. So there's Amigos Bravos, there's me, and then there's two units to my right, which are not, which are not business fronts. Or one is, one is Madame M. It's like a psychic...
This is, this is sort of on Quesnel.
Yeah.
It's set back. It's set back about thirty feet.
Yeah.
Or twenty feet from the road. Thirty feet from the road, yeah.
Any comments from staff about this? Have you been working with them?
Yes, I, we, he came to me and he talked to me about the sign and how it was handmade, and how previously he had been told that he needed to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission. And, you know, there's really nothing in the code that addresses this. The previous commission was talking about having signs that were either metal, but not shiny metal, or having wood signage. And we actually brought in front of the commission some text changes to the sign section of the code, as well as to the historic district. And, and that was the recommendation of the Historic Preservation Commission. We are planning on visiting with the merchants this Friday at nine o'clock in the morning to get their input. So right now, we are looking at changes to the code. The code isn't real clear as far as, I mean, it has some things that are not allowed in the historic district, as well as the regular signage. But I think the commission sentiment, at least the earlier commission sentiment, was that they would like to have artistic handmade signs, and they wanted to allow that, including neon signs that have been handmade and were of artistic interest versus, you know, the typical open sign. So, I suggested that he come before you and ask you how you would like to do this approval. Do you want to have him go through the process of doing a certificate of appropriateness? Do you think that what he's proposing is okay? I mean, one of the things that the code says is that metal is allowed, but not shiny metal. And so, it's kind of up to you as to how you want to proceed on this.
Well, I feel, looking at it, well, one is, I mean, he's got, he's got a well-known Taos artist that's put the accent on it. The, the lettering and so forth is not on shiny metal. So, I don't...
I'll just let it go.
I don't have a problem with it myself, at this time. But it's not being brought to us for a vote, right? They just want our consensus or not? What is it? I don't understand what we're, because it's not even on the agenda, or, you know...
Right, it's kind of, it's a citizen forum question. And I wasn't sure whether or not he needed to go through the certificate of appropriateness. I'm willing to approve it as a code administrator myself. But I thought it was, it would be nice to give the commission heads up.
I personally would support your decision.
Okay.
And I'd like to hear from our new members. Welcome.
No, I, I live on the street, actually. I have no, no issues with it.
Okay.
Tamara, what, you mentioned it's plywood?
Yeah, it's all sealed.
It looks like it's got some depth to it. Are there several layers of plywood, or is there a frame behind it?
Yeah, I recycled a bunch of little pieces of plywood and screwed them all together into one big chunk.
And it's all painted, painted wood?
Yeah, it's painted.
I, I don't have any problem with the size, or the materials, or the aesthetics of it. I'm worried it's not going to weather so well.
Mm-hmm.
And you may need to repaint it often.
Probably.
Is that part of Larry Bell and, and Ed Sandoval's deal with you, to repaint it?
Oh, I think Ed's going to let me go over his letters. It's not, it's not, it's not too difficult.
Very good, yeah.
Anybody else on the board? Wish to say anything? Wish to comment?
I'm in favor of the proposal and not needing a certificate of appropriateness at this time.
Great. So without taking a vote, it seems like we're all in agreement. Since it is a citizens forum, we could just let it go as a, at that, I believe.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
So I leave it, I leave it up and I talk to you, or I just leave it up?
Yeah, we'll sign, we'll sign, we'll issue you the sign permit part.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I have a couple minutes?
Please, sir, come in, please.
Sure. I have been on the, I've given time on the planning commission for twelve-plus years. Some of it has been on this commission. And last night, the Town of Taos Council and the town manager elected to discuss my future on either commission. I've been on both for quite some time. This has happened without the council or anyone ever talking to me, leaving me completely out of the loop. And I feel abused by the process, by the protocol, that the council chose to discuss me in a public forum without my being notified or being made part of it. And I think the council should not treat people, volunteers, that have dedicated themselves for twelve-some years, their time, expertise, and knowledge, to treat people like that. And on that note, I'm resigning from this body as of this very moment. Thank you, everybody. I, I love doing this, but I'm not going to take any abuse from, from the council or the town manager. And I don't want to put on a Rodney Dangerfield act, because that's not what it's about. It's about a common decency protocol, that if you're going to discuss somebody, it's like, it's like having a public meeting. You notify people. You notify the public. This was, the council and the manager were discussing me. They never notified me. They never gave me a heads up. Nothing. I think they should be ashamed of themselves, and I hope that they are watching right now.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened.
Would you, no, I mean, you're surprising me.
I know.
I mean, huh?
I'm surprising myself.
Would you reconsider, or need some time to think about it?
I wouldn't need, I wouldn't need time, because I'm, I'm really angered by it. And, you know, it's, it's about nothing else, except you all will be volunteers. You all want to be, at least acknowledged, you know, if not appreciated. And to be mistreated like that by politicians for whatever, whatever political means or vendettas, because I ran for council before, or whatever, I don't want to even infuse it with some innuendos, because I don't, I don't know. The bottom line is, they should have not discussed anything about me without including me. End of story. Thank you, good luck. I welcome all of you. It's, it's a very rewarding role that you're going to play, and, and the historical district is in your hands. Good luck with it.
Thank you for your efforts, Paul.
Thank you.
I would, I would like to add a footnote to that, just because our chair, for whatever reason, was not notified with any due time. And I learned about her not being reappointed this afternoon, and I had called to find out what was going on, and she knew nothing about it. And, uh, for whatever reason, I just want to make a note of it, that some protocol needs, needs to, needs to happen. I mean, I welcome these people. I know, I know, I know you all just heard about it, what, last night or this morning? And, and I'm glad you made it. But I feel, anyway, I just want to just put it out for the record that I don't feel that she was properly notified. And if she would have appeared, she would have been pretty embarrassed to find out here. Things happen. I just, we'll go on. Okay, well... So, I guess we're still on matters from staff, or is there, are there any matters?
Um, we gave you some packets, kind of as an orientation. What I included in there, what Amy included, we together put together this packet. But I was looking for the bylaws, because I had understood that the previous Historic Preservation Commission had bylaws. When I actually got them from a previous commissioner, it, from what our research shows and from what she had, it appears that the bylaws never have been formally adopted. So Amy and I redid them, and we actually put in kind of our thoughts on it and revised it somewhat. So it's still a draft. It's something that if you're interested, you know, at a later meeting, we can bring it before you to actually adopt. I think you should take a little bit of time and read it. But basically, what it gives is kind of what your role is on the commission. We have the land use code that has a section on the historic district overlay zone, and then we have a section that talks about the commission and its powers. And so basically, what you do is you review cases that are in the historic overlay zone, like buildings, building renovations. If it's a big wall, or a mural, or things like that, we'll be asking you to review those. And we do that usually in a quasi-judicial hearing. So there's a kind of a formal format for doing that. It's like going to court, where you basically are taking testimony. Staff puts together a staff report, and we go through the criteria that's listed in the, in the historic overlay zone section of the code. And the applicant has to answer those criteria as well. So what generally happens is the applicant gets up, makes their case about why they are requesting basically what it's called is certificate of appropriateness. How they're meeting the design standards that are in the code and whatnot. And then staff then gives their staff report. And generally, that, those two become part of the record. So the applicant's application and testimony, and then staff's report, and whatever testimony they provide becomes part of the record. And then you're allowed to ask questions of either the applicant or staff, or the staff can ask applicants of the, or questions of the applicant and vice versa. So it's sort of this fact-finding mission. And then you guys make a motion, and then there needs to be a second, and if it's not seconded, then somebody else can make a motion. It takes three people to make a quorum, and then it takes a majority of the quorum to actually pass a motion, or to pass, you know, to, to approve a certificate of appropriateness, or whatever the item might be. And then the other thing I guess I need to mention is that you need to excuse yourself or recuse yourself if you have a conflict of interest, if you're, if you're like, affected by the decision that's made in the case, or if you have some sort of financial benefit. The other way that you need to excuse yourself is if you have like, communicated with the applicant about the application, or you've talked to somebody else with, with information that's tried to sway you to vote in a particular way, and you feel uncomfortable about sitting up there making the decision when you already have some other knowledge. And, so then you need to excuse yourself and let, and let the chairperson know before the hearing actually starts. And we have provided a script that kind of, you can follow to, to go through that, to make sure that there's no conflict of interest and that what, there hasn't been ex parte communication. And then the final thing I guess I must say is if there's a meeting that you're interested in, say like, about the county courthouse and its renovation or something like that, and you would like to attend, there's no problem with you attending. What you need to do, though, is let staff know. And we need to legally advertise seventy-two hours in advance that there may be a quorum at that meeting, so that we are meeting the Open Meetings Act. And we also included the Open Meetings Act that was adopted by council this year, so you have that. And then the other thing I guess I must add is that we cannot have a rolling quorum. So you can't discuss the case with another commissioner before the meeting, and then have that commissioner talk to another commissioner. You need to like, read the staff report, you know, go visit the site, do what you need to do to kind of get prepared for the case, and then listen to the testimony with an open mind, and then make your own decision without consulting with others on the commission, because then we get into this rolling quorum. And I think I've covered everything.
That should be...
Wow, that's pretty nice that you've done that. I never got an introduction like that to, I mean, it's, it's nice to get this at least stated, so that we can discuss it. When you were talking about going to a meeting or outside, you meant as a group, or you didn't mean individually that we need to?
If, if everybody shows up at this meeting?
If everybody shows up.
Or even if, if three members, since it only takes three members of this commission to make a quorum, if three of you show up to something at one time, that's some kind of meeting type, like when the DOT came in for, to do the meeting on the, talking about the road extensions and all those kind of things. If three people would have shown up, we would have had to make sure that we notified that we were going to have a quorum.
So one of us would probably, if we just showed up then without prior notice, one of us would probably have to leave then?
Would have to leave, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Does that include town council meetings?
Yes, that includes town council meetings. And it's really not a, not a, not a big deal. If you guys would like to attend, and, and even if you don't know that there's going to be three of you going, but there's enough in interest, just let me know. Give me a call. I mean, it doesn't hurt to err on saying there's, there may be a possible quorum, and then only one person shows up. I mean, no big deal, right? But at least we've advertised it. So then if, if all five of you decide to appear, you can. You're not, you're not limited, so...
So this Friday, the merchants are being presented with some information on signage?
Right. We're trying to get their input, so...
Ifs?
We're talking about, you know, our thoughts about maybe allowing neon signs that have some artistic value, or that are handmade, or, you know, unique somehow. And then we're talking about maybe only allowing metal and like, wood-type signs. So you, they don't have to be made out of wood or metal, but they need to have that look. We want to see how the merchants feel about that. A lot of them are using vinyl. And, you know, there is an expense associated with that. We're also going to talk to them about the sandwich signs. We're getting a lot of complaints about sandwich signs being allowed on the plaza. The current code does not allow the A-frame signs on the plaza, but it does allow them in the historic district off the plaza. So another thing that we're going to ask them about, because this has been another item of debate, is what is the plaza? How do you define the plaza? And then, another thing that came up is the murals and allowing murals.
Mm-hmm.
And sculptures? That's been something that we've discussed, too. Paul's actually been attending quite a few of our meetings.
So I would plan on, if I know where the meeting is going to be Friday, I would, I would be going there.
Okay.
Anybody else from the commission?
Didn't, wasn't there a meeting scheduled last month to discuss this with the merchants? Because I remember it conflicted with my calendar, so...
Right, and it, and it has, it was rescheduled.
Oh, so it didn't happen.
And then it was rescheduled to a Monday, and then it was rescheduled from then to this date. So we're...
And it's like, eight o'clock in the morning or something?
Yeah. It's at nine o'clock at the county courthouse on Friday. So if you would like to come, we can, do we have enough time to advertise?
You do have, or you don't?
We don't.
You don't have time to advertise?
I will not be attending. Paul, you're in, you're in good hands.
Now, sometimes we have, and I guess, is this the case, when we've had people on the board attend meetings like this, and they, they go as a representative, right? Or do you have to, I mean, they go as, as a spokesperson for us, or, I mean, they, they're going to be bringing back information, or their input is part of our consensus, is a, is a, or they're speaking as a member of the Historic Preservation Board? Or is that not allowed? Or is it, they have to go as a private citizen? If there's only one or two, or you know, like...
If there's only one or two, I mean, you can bring the impact, you can bring, you know, what you took away from the meeting and present it to the, to the commission, that's fine. You can share it.
But at the meeting, do you, can you introduce yourself as a, as a member of the, I'm just, a technicality, as a, as a member of the Historic Review Board, or do you introduce yourself as a private citizen?
You would introduce yourself as a member of the commission if that's...
And that's cool, without a notice?
If that's the role you want to play.
Yeah, that's what you want to do.
Yeah, so, you would like to know if you could say that, right?
If I'm asked to introduce myself, Paul?
Well, I mean...
Let them know that I'm a member of the Historic Preservation...
I'm just making sure that it wasn't a conflict of, of one of the bylaws or something, as...
No, and I actually think that the, that the merchants may be interested in the fact that the commission does take an interest, and they do have somebody there. I mean, we are asking for stakeholder input. We're not just passing code.
Right.
Right.
So what about you, Bill? You gonna, you...
I don't, didn't bring my calendar, but if I'm free, I'll go.
So that's two, so that's...
That's fine.
We're maxed out. Suck.
Well, you know what? This does not have to be the first meeting either. I mean, we don't have to just have one meeting. Because some of the merchants may not be able to make it on Friday either, at that time.
Or it might get tabled again.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Town, Town of Taos staff?
So they're, just...
Planning staff, yeah.
Specifically the planning department.
So...
So a couple of other little things. We usually send out the agendas the Friday before the meeting, and those will be the email addresses that I've had you guys write down for me. And so I'll email out the agenda and then your agenda packet. And so your agenda packet is going to usually be the minutes from the last meeting, it's going to be your staff reports, and then it's also going to be any other extra documents that we need to send out to you guys. We will also always have hard copies of those agendas printed out for you the night of the meeting, or in our office beforehand, so that you can pick it up to review and read ahead of time. If we have any issues with meeting a quorum, I usually start calling Wednesday to start bugging everybody. But if you can let us know a couple of days ahead of time, you'd like email, send us, you know, a phone call to either Martha or I, and we will, just so that we know whether or not...
So you want to know either way?
Only, only if you're going to be absent, if you're going to be here.
Oh, okay, that's the way I, I always looked at it, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I only call if there's some big debate that, that a lot of people aren't going to show up.
Okay. Do you mind just briefly going over this, this packet that you handed out? You started to do that before?
Oh, okay, so, just like Martha was saying, so we have a draft of the bylaws. Like she was saying, if you want to spend a little bit of time kind of looking over it, we've given a breakdown of the, of the different processes that the meeting will go through. The second one is the calendar, so it gives you a breakdown of the dates of the meetings in that last column. And then it also shows you what the applicant has to go through when they have to turn in their application, their legal notification dates, and their neighbor notification dates. The next set is going to be, I believe, the breakdown of the, it's the commission powers, the powers of the commission. And then the section after that is actually the HOZ code itself, and so that's the code that you guys are going to be working out of. And then the section after that one is going to be the sign code. And I believe in the last section is the Open Meetings Act. I might have forgotten to attach that. So let me know, because I can email that out. I know I printed it, but not sure if I... And then we'll, we'll also get maps out to you guys as soon as we can to kind of give you the actual district, too, so that you can see what areas that we're looking at. And it, I was going to say, there's also definitions of contributing buildings and non-contributing buildings.
And then Amy's been working really hard to get some... And then Amy's been working really hard to get several grants from the State Historic Preservation Office. And so we are actually taking the grant agreements to council, to the next council meeting, which isn't next week, but it's the following week on Tuesday. And one is for a walking map. And then the second grant is to look at the historic significance of the plaza and how to possibly make it more usable and complement the county courthouse and, you know, keep its historic significance within the center of town as a plaza, but also make it maybe more usable for events. Like when the, we actually had representatives from the State Historic Preservation Office or SHIP-O come up, and they were pointing out that some of the walls, the lower walls, are preventing movement within the plaza and kind of limiting how the community is able to use the plaza. So they actually suggested doing this study, you know, kind of looking at its past, its historical significance, what there's of historic value and what's not, and maybe coming up with a plan so that, you know, it has more of a, something that we can be proud of. And then the third one is basically the administration coordination of the grants. And Amy is providing a lot of her time as in matching these grants and in-kind services.
And so I actually, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we do with the State Historic Preservation Office. I'm just kind of the funnel for them. So anything that this board does, I just actually funnel our stuff to them to let them know what we're doing. We can ask them if we ever need their advice, or if we are kind of at an impasse and we don't know where to go with a project, we can always ask for their input. But their input is not, you guys are, you make the decisions when it comes to the historic district and what comes before you. And we just pass along the information to the State Historic Preservation Office.
Last year, we were discussing amendments, and there had been other studies and all that stuff done. Is that something that we're still going to be addressing in the near future?
We're going to.
With this, with this commission?
We were hoping to bring those to the next meeting so that we don't lose those. And that's also going to be with the signs, the sign amendments that we're taking to the merchants. We were hoping to bring all of those back in front of this commission next meeting and have them.
Yeah, we actually had an architect out of Santa Fe that spent some time rewriting the historic overlay zone code. And then apparently what actually got adopted was not what the commission at that time thought had been agreed upon based on this, was it an architect out of Santa Fe had put together?
Feather and Gill.
That's Feather and Gill.
When was that done?
Couple of years ago, at least.
Different than the SMART code exercise?
Completely different. It was a complete rewrite of this, and I don't know, it just ended up lost, and we were trying to revisit it at least at one point. So if you guys could review this and realize that there is a possibility of some amendments to be done, and that they're going to try to bring us, from what I understand, up to snuff of some of the stuff that had been recommended, and we as a board can propose that to the council. And so, because it's really hard to be vague with when people come up and you're not able to point to some section that says, whatever the restrictions are, to just make it an aesthetic decision, sometimes is not looked at very well in the law.
Right, and you'll see, when you start looking at the code, that the indentation's like crazy as far as things getting really, really, really deep down, and then all of a sudden, you're losing, like the last part of the code, it took a while for Amy and I even to figure out, oh, that's not indented all the way down, that's actually up on top. So it makes it hard to write a staff report because the criteria isn't real clear. It's hard for the applicant to make a good application because the criteria is not clear. I mean, and then with the most recent code change, they talk about the street scape and the environment, and they kind of jump all over the place. Somehow, we've got to simplify the code for both the applicant and for us. And so that's why the commission was relooking at the code again. And so we'll bring that to you the next meeting. We thought it was a little bit too much to bring to you this tonight. I mean, having found out that you're just been appointed, right? We don't want to scare you. But we really do appreciate you volunteering your time and committing to do this. We really do.
Thank you guys for your effort. This is pretty good. I would, is there any?
I just have one additional question for Martha or Amy. How does our board, how does the Historic Review Board interface and overlap with the P and Z board?
Well, that's an interesting question because when I first got here, we were talking about a new apartment complex. And so I had it come before the Historic Preservation Commission first for architectural review.
Was it in the historic zone?
And it was in the historic zone, and the commission actually asked for some revisions to it, and it came back several times. And then once that approval was made, then it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a commercial site plan review. And then, and then they gave their final review. And the Historic Preservation Commission actually put some conditions on their approval, which the Planning and Zoning Commission then adopted as well. And so that became part of what we were planning on having as part of the building permit issuance process. In the end, the project did not go forward. The applicant couldn't make it financially work. However, that applicant will probably be back. And so that's where you'll see the overlap, is where it's usually new construction, where we will have it come to you first for architectural review, and then it will go to Planning and Zoning for the commercial site plan review. And in some cases, if it's residential, it will just be you looking at the architectural standards, like if it's an addition or an alteration to existing structure in the historic district that's of, you know, significance. And it outlines kind of what the code administrator can just approve versus the commission. And then if I have any concerns, I can bounce it up to you.
Okay, thank you.
So then, I'm sitting here as an acting chair because I was the vice chair, and the chair didn't get reappointed. But I would like to, if it's okay with everybody, to put off the election of our chair, is it just the chair and vice chair is all we choose, I think, right?
Right.
Until our next meeting, give everybody a little bit of.
Sure.
Chance to adjust themselves, see how they want to move forward.
I think that's a good idea.
Are we still a five-member board?
We are talking about appointing another member, yes.
Like in addition to Pavel's absence? Or replacing Pavel?
Yes, because we've been having trouble getting a quorum. We may run for a bit with four members, but I think it's actually easier on the Historic Preservation Commission to have another member so that you don't have the issue with having a quorum, especially when we have an applicant that's, you know, advertised, illegally advertised, notified their adjacent neighbors, and then we don't have a quorum, and then it gets awkward because then we've got to meet, and then we've got to set a new date. And we're, it makes it hard on everybody.
Understood.
So obviously, we need to replace Pavel, so that would make it five, but were you talking about six people?
Is there six on this board?
No, there's only five.
There's only five.
Right, so you want to keep it at five. I'm saying.
Right.
Did you want to increase it to six or some, you know, another number while we're at it? No, I may make it even easier.
Will town staff seek another applicant or appoint another?
You know, that's up to the mayor.
Okay.
So I don't know what the mayor will do.
Well, we would encourage the mayor to appoint one more so that the quorum is not an issue.
Right, that's actually what I did today, so.
Okay. Thank you, Martha.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
I didn't make the motion, I entertained, I would entertain a motion.
You say so.
Very good.
And I say second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.